Testing one, two, three. This will be the May 7, 2014 City Council Workshop Meeting, followed by the regular
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a City Council Workshop, May 7, 2014, approximately 6:50, for interview of board applicant. At this time, I'd like to call Nancy Woodham up, please. Nancy, just take a seat there, it's real informal. And, uh, thank you very much for applying for this board. Um, the council will ask you questions to each of them. I just have one. Normally, most of our boards meet at 7 o'clock in the evening. This board happens to meet Friday morning, does that fit your time?
That's perfect.
Great, thank you. Um, Nancy, tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
Oh, my. I, uh, owned a small business in Tallahassee for 20 years, retired to Georgia, worked at a garden center part-time there, did most of their displays, helped clients with their gardens, you know, display gardens, volunteered at Callaway Gardens in Pine Mountain, Georgia, and, uh, moved down here a few years ago. Just getting used to gardening on the beach, whole 'nother world, but I'm learning that native is the way to go, less lawn is better lawn, and, uh, I really like it here, and I'm more than willing to help in any way I can.
Thank you very, very much. Questions from council?
Good evening. Thank you for coming out.
Hello.
Um, just what do you see as the biggest challenge we have as far as the city goes in the area where you're interested in? Just thoughts?
Personally, I think we have too much grass. I'd like to see more native plantings, less fertilizer, less runoff into the, um, the river, but I also really love what you have done on South Patrick, North South Patrick Drive, and on Cassia, I think that looks wonderful. I also like that there's a lot of native growing reclaimed beach property here. I love this much better than all the condos down in the Atlantic or up in Cocoa Beach. I think you're taking wonderful care of the earth.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm glad to see that you're interested, number one. Number two, I see you're a member of the Conradina Chapter of Florida Native Plant Society.
I just joined a couple of months ago.
Well, I'm sure they're gonna be a great resource for you, because I know Brett and Sharon Dolan very well, and Kami Donaldson, and, um, I'm a past member, I just don't have the time to devote to it that I used to, but I think, um, if you've been following what we have been doing in the city for the last several months, we're talking about some of the issues that are going on along A1A, um, and dealing with the Department of Transportation and some upgrades, and, you know, we're talking about different plantings that are gonna be going on there, so, um, I think this would be something that's kinda up your alley, and the beautification board does look at a lot of the things that we do as far as, um, plantings and stuff in the city, so I'm glad to see that you're interested and that you're taking this approach, and you're right, it is different growing here.
It is completely different.
When I first moved here 20 some-odd years ago, almost 30, um, things that grow over the river don't grow here.
Right.
Um, so you'll, you'll be experimenting with new things.
And Zone 8 is much different than Zone 10.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, that's all I have.
Nancy, I don't really have any questions for you, uh, listening to you speak and reading your application, it seems that you are very knowledgeable and, um, very well-suited for the beautification board, and I'm really happy that you've come forward to volunteer.
Thank you.
Nancy, thank you very much, that's really, the question at the end of our council meeting agenda item is appointment to boards, you're more than welcome to stay and visit our council, with us during our council meeting, um, if not, we will contact you, um, when we are well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further business on appointment of board applicants?
No, sir.
Here and none. Meetings adjourned, start the council meeting approximately five minutes.
That's our chance, I don't want to pass it.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order a regular City Council meeting of the City of Satellite Beach, May 7, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in a moment of silence and a pledge. A moment of silence, please. And a pledge. Pledge what it means.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go on to Agenda Item 3, Citizens' Comments. The floor is open for citizens' comments, which are non-agenda items. Here and none close citizens' comments. At this time, the Chair is going to rearrange the, uh, agenda items for tonight, and I'm gonna move Agenda Number 9 up next, which is Discuss Take Action on Sports Park Football Field Expansion Estimate. Lead on this, Allen?
Good evening. Trying to make this quick as possible, and then we're gonna be, uh, a little bit on the agenda tonight.
Allen, excuse me, you have to pull that microphone right in front of your mouth. Thank you.
It's not on. It's not on. Allen, stop. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Allen, if you would.
All right, I can hear you. I'll just do it over the podium.
All right, can you hear me now?
Okay. Sorry about that.
Me, too.
Okay. Um, earlier in the year, we spoke, uh, with you about, um, and this was for budget year last year, about the expansion of the football field, and you dedicated $60,000 to assist the football folks in, um, expanding the football field, so that they were in compliance with the rest of the league, and they were able to have their seniors play. Um, we were trying to work some, um, some issues out with the football folks and maybe get some in-kind help from folks to keep the cost down. Um, I spoke with quite a few of those folks, and, um, it didn't, didn't pan out the way I thought it would, so we went out to bid for the work on the football field. Um, we advertised, as we normally do, and we had no bids received. So, um, and if you're familiar with the bid process, it's not, it's not cheap, and I didn't wanna eat up a lot more money on the, um, the rebid, so I just made some phone calls and tried to get some, somebody to throw us a bid at us, and I called Pavco, who has done, uh, quite a bit of work for us in the past, and asked them if they knew any firms that would be willing to do some site work for us, and to, you know, we could get a bid from them. Um, they gave me the name of someone, I met with Lance Rodriguez of Santa Cruz Construction, and he gave me a bid, which to me was a little high. I tried to whittle it down as best I could, I met with Carrie, Carrie and I did some more whittling down, and so we came up with the final, um, bid of $50,565, I believe it is. Um, and that's what we're looking for approval on this evening.
Thank you. Questions from council? Budgeted item, basically came in under budget.
Yes, um, we have David King's, um, costs in there, too, and I think that came to about $4, $4,500, um, but outside of that, yeah, it's...
Allen, the sidewalk that's being removed, is that the sidewalk on the east side, adjacent to the road?
No, it's, it's a connector sidewalk from the east side sidewalk, the Pedway that we built, um, with the FERDOT money. That sidewalk connects to where the Pedway is. It basically runs behind the football field as it stands now.
So it would be to, is the sidewalk west of it?
Um, actually, to the north and west of it, yeah.
North and west, okay. So we, we're not gonna have that sidewalk, is basically...
No, and it doesn't, and, and as Carrie and I looked at it, it really doesn't make sense, because the parking lot's right there, so, you know, it, it's a money saver.
Okay. Further questions from council?
I move to award the contract to Santa Cruz Construction for the expansion of the sports park football field in the amount of $50,000, $50,565.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. At this time, I'll open it up for this Agenda Item Number 9 for public comment. Floor is open. Here and none, bring it back to council. Any further council comments?
House Speaker Bremer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ludina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Kena?
Yes, motion carries, 5, nothing. Good luck. And, uh, Allen, thank you very much. Carrie, thank you. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 4, Citizen, excuse me, City Council Comments. Would you like to start?
Um, a lot of people know that an ethics complaint was filed against John Ferguson. In a bizarre and rambling complaint, another, a number of things were alleged, to include some insinuations about me. The commission took it seriously. There were no allegations about me, so there was no investigation of me, but there was a very thorough investigation conducted on John Ferguson. There was so much nonsense in the complaint, I think my favorite line is, quote, "It may be relevant to the commission that Lorraine E. Gott is a sitting member of the Satellite Beach City Council." That's, that shows the stretching and the reaching that was done to try to find wrongdoing. After a very lengthy and thorough investigation by the commission, which undoubtedly used up a lot of tax dollars, this is what the Ethics Commission ruled. On all four of the charges, all four of the issues, no probable cause. Accordingly, this complaint is dismissed. At the end of all of this, we didn't learn anything about John Ferguson that we didn't already know, namely, that you cannot find a more ethical person anywhere. And sadly, we also didn't learn anything that we didn't already know about the complaint. He got what he deserved.
Thank you. Further council comments?
Yeah, I, um, I attended the National Day of Prayer Ceremony on May 1, and, um, once again, Larry Booth, for those of you who don't know, who is the pastor of Our Father's House Next Door, Larry's been hosting this for years, and, um, for those of you who don't know, Larry has cancer, and, um, he actually spoke about two months ago at Trinity Presbyterian, and spent about 45 minutes at a men's breakfast talking about his cancer issue, and how, right now, he's doing pretty good. Um, National Day of Prayer was just another way for us to get together as, um, city leaders, city staff, police and fire, and be thankful for, um, what we have here in Satellite Beach, and Larry did a phenomenal job as the guest speaker, um, this year, so it was a, it was a great opportunity to, to be, um, with Larry. Last year, he actually had Danny McKnight, who was the, um, Colonel from Black Hawk Down, he spoke last year. Larry brings a lot of talented people to National Day of Prayer, and this year, he was the, he was the speaker, and, uh, he did a great job, and please keep him in your prayers, because he's still battling with cancer. Um, the other thing I did was, um, the Keepaard Beautiful Beach Pickup, um, on Saturday the 26th, I participated in that, and, um, that went very well, um, there were a lot of people that turned out to pick up, um, stuff on the beach, and I was really surprised, I walked down the beach, I really didn't find a lot of stuff on the beach, I found more stuff kinda like coming up from the Soto Parkway along the road and in the park than I did on the beach. And, you know, the little plastic things, there are those little square things that hold hot dog and hamburger buns together, you know? I found probably 50 of those around the pavilion, so, you know, we have people that rent our pavilions, and they're probably the worst culprits at littering. But, um, the other thing I did notice when I was walking down the beaches, um, at the doom line where Brevard County planted sea oats, I noticed, and I'm not sure if, if you're aware of it, I brought it to Courtney's attention already, but, um, a lot of the sea oats that were planted are dying. Um, you know, I, I would say, from what I saw, probably a third of what was planted didn't look viable, so, um, I'm wondering if we can make an assessment of what's going on, and we do have that, um, agreement with Aquatic Plants of Florida that comes and harvests seed here, so maybe, um, after we make whatever our assessment is, we can get with them and figure out, um, what we might need from them in the way of plants, and, um, maybe have them start growing some for us, and we can figure out how we wanna get them planted, but that's all I have, thank you.
Um, I attended the sunrise service on Easter, which is good for me, because I'm not a morning person, uh, great start to beautiful weather, and, right here, locally. Um, and there's something I have to do, I, I hate to do this, and I hate to take up the time, but I, I do need to make a statement, this is the first time I've ever had a written statement, but I feel compelled to do this. Um, on April 16, Councilman Gott asked permission to delay the comments until the end of the meeting, and Council graciously agreed. Um, I went back and listened to tape from 2 hours, 2 minutes, and 14 seconds, almost 10 minutes. Uh, Ms. Gott read portions, she quoted, she was reading in part from docs obtained by the JALAC from a friend, and again, this discussion goes from, for almost 10 minutes, from 2 hours, 2 minutes, 14 seconds into 2:12:56. During her comments, she said she, she left stunned by the documents she obtained, and stated, "I continued discrediting in the city." She went further to state that the citizens were finding flaky information, and that the letters that were sent to Honorable Aruza were crazy. She went further to discredit former council members and accused them of me of going behind the back of City Council. She described my long history with the JALAC stunning. Um, I, I requested those documents that she had in her hand, and it was 26 pages. I requested them via public records request, and I have those here. Um, and what I, what I did in the interim is I contacted the JALAC, and there were two public records requests put in, one by Mr. Ferguson, one by Mr. Olmer. This is here, I'd like to put in the records, this is the official documents from the JALAC, 298 pages. So, I'd like that to be part of the public record. This is the disc that contains 290 pages, 98 pages that the JALAC mailed to me that were requested by two citizens. I'm putting this in the records so that many citizens, so that the citizens may take a look at the documents in their entire, in their entirety, and use their own judgment as to whether or not my correspondence was stunning and discrediting to the city. With the above said, there are many people who can bear the fact that someone that they not support earned the right to be on City Council via the choice of the voters. I've run into a few, few people, a few folks like that right here. My issue is never with a non supporter, my issue is when a non supporter chooses to provide documents for use as a political whipping tool. Perhaps you should be very careful what is being insinuated when they're presented in part of a public record in lieu of their entirety. So, here are the 26 pages, and here are the 298 pages, and that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Uh, I like Dominic, attended the National Day, Day of Prayer Breakfast, and I agree with you, Dominic, it was very well done, and a very good turnout. Uh, at the last council meeting, I updated Council on our initiative towards restarting CFAL. Uh, I got a call the other day from Nancy Glass, and, uh, we're, Courtney and I are on the next meeting and under old business to talk about, Courtney's been working really hard on the resolution to bring that forward to council, so that we can kinda take the lead on that. Uh, and I'm just gonna go back and tell them that we hit, we accept the opportunity to speak in June, so we'll be the, the primary speaker at the June meeting on CFAL, and in addition to that, Tallahassee's gonna come down to that meeting as well to answer questions on CFAL. So, at the, at the June Space Coast League of Cities meeting, I'll just do a brief PowerPoint presentation, Courtney's gonna jump in somewhere along the way and, and provide the information on the city side, and then Janine Harris from the Department of Elder Affairs from Tallahassee will attend to answer questions for the, for the entire group that is there. So we're getting this going, and, uh, thank you, Courtney, for all your help in getting the resolution moving and all that sort of thing, so we're, we're moving along, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mark, thank you very much for all the hard work, you know, it's been a lot of hours, and, uh, we thank you. Moving on to City Attorney's Report. Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Next Agenda Item, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the city had a very successful drug take-back event on April 26, and this was a partnership between our Police Department and Walgreens, and we actually took in, um, over 214 pounds of prescription and non-prescription drugs on that day, so that was a very successful event. The, um, Satellite Beach will observe the 21-day salute to the flag, um, on Saturday, June 14, 2014, Flag Day through Friday, July 4, 2014, which is Independence Day. The 53 flags are raised at 7:30 a.m. and retired at 5:30 p.m. for 21 days in front of the Scotty Colt Municipal Complex, um, and we basically are just advising people that they are looking for volunteers, and if you are willing to volunteer, please call the VFW, and I have the phone number in, in, um, our packet, our council packet. Um, I did wanna thank the church community for their annual breakfast for the National Day of Prayer, um, and I thought it was interesting how Pastor Booth did mention how important the fabric of our community is, and how, how different Satellite Beach is in that respect, and I think it's, it's important to note how the churches play such a big role in that, in that fabric as well. Um, and, so I really appreciated their, um, support of our city as well as our staff members, they're very communicative with our staff members, um, and we did have a very successful sunrise service, um, so I wanted just to give them a thank you. I did wanna add something, um, I wanted to add the, some information on the American Planning Association Conference I attended in Atlanta. This was a national conference, um, and it's over 5,000 planners were at that conference, it was very large. Um, the four major topics that were at that conference were complete streets, and we, and as you know, we're getting ready, we adopted a resolution, and we're getting ready to, um, look at comprehensive plan policy changes to include the complete streets concept and, as a concept for our city. Also, communities for a lifetime, which, you know, obviously, we've been doing that for some time now. Um, climate change, and community resiliency, we just did, we did just receive a grant, which I'm gonna talk about in a minute, um, and then healthy communities overall, and we have such a large recreation department and recreation facilities, that if you, if you could look at our city and think about healthy communities, ours would definitely be one. Um, so I thought that was interesting, that we were, our tiny little city was such a forefront of all these major planning issues, um, that at a national conference were considered new, and we have been doing a lot of them for some time now. Um, and, and the informational items, we did receive the Coastal Partnership Initiative Grant from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and this was awarded to the Regional Planning, East Coast Regional Planning Council, or East Central Florida, I'm sorry, Regional Planning Council. This grant, they applied with us as a partner, as well as FIT, um, and this grant was, is in the amount of $15,000 to conduct a community resilience, resiliency initiative with resulting coastal community adaptation planning and community participation, updated data regarding areas threatened by coastal erosion and sea level rise, and policy language for the city's adaptation areas in the comprehensive plan. So, this is pretty much the next phase of those comprehensive plan policies, and I'm pretty sure they'll likely result in some changes to those comprehensive plan policies, um, but it is exciting that we did receive that grant, so that grant period is from July to July, so we'll be starting that pretty quickly, okay? Um, I, as many of you know, we're undergoing an email exchange server, um, we're, we're switching servers for our email system, so if you send an email to the city staff during this time, and you don't get a response, it's because they didn't get it. So, um, please give us a call during this period, I think we have probably another couple of days before we, we get to where it's finalized. Um, Dana Blickley with the Property Appraisers Office is scheduled for June 18 for a general presentation to City Council as requested by Councilmember Deenan. Um, that's, the presentation's gonna focus generally on the Property Appraisers Office, it's a short presentation, it's kinda timely, because the, um, at that time, we'll be getting the tax rolls, so the, the date of that meeting, um, actually works out well for us. I do have, um, two action items, the first one is the Brevard County School Board is asking for the formal appointments of the Capitol Outlet Committee members. The Capitol Outlet Committee is a committee that is established by the 2008 interlocal agreement between the school board and all of the local governments of Brevard County that participate in school concurrency. The COC oversees concurrency recommendations as well as school planning, and the COC is comprised of planners and city managers from all participating local governments. I personally, and as Representative Titusville, and now with the City of Satellite Beach, have been on that committee since its inception. Um, so I'm, therefore, I'm recommending that you appoint me to this committee, and then appoint John Stone as my alternate, so we're requesting a formal approval of that.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro, any discussion from council? Here and none, open the Action Item 1 up to public comment. Here and none, bring it back to council. Any further council discussion? Lenore?
Councilwoman Bremer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ludina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Kena?
Yes, motion carries, 5, nothing. Courtney?
Uh, the second action item is, um, we're requesting that you approve our recommendation for the submittal for project priorities to the Florida Department of Transportation. Annually, they request project priorities, um, to be submitted to the Florida Department of Transportation, and these submittals place projects into the queue for DOT as well as TPO funding, so staff is recommending submitting the A1A corridor this year, and, you know, basically, we do, we would resubmit every year, um, based on, you know, our needs for that roadway. So this will place A1A on the FDOT project list, and it is the first step towards making this project eligible for state and federal transportation funding, so we're requesting your approval for this submittal.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Bremer, second by Vice Mayor Gott. Any further comment from council? Here and none, open up this Agenda Item 2 to public comment. Here and none, back to council. Any council comments? Here and none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Ludina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Olmer?
Yes.
Mayor Kena?
Yes, motion carries, nothing. Courtney, is that...
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Give me one second here. Uh, I'm, we have a few minutes here, and I'm gonna just, uh, proclamation, and we will do an Earth Day proclamation today, and Councilwoman Deenan had asked for this, and I've asked her to read it.
Okay, wish me luck. I lost my reading glasses over the week, my glasses over the weekend. Official proclamation, City of Satellite Beach, Florida. Whereas, April 22, 2014 marked the 44th anniversary of Earth Day. Since 1970, Earth Day has continually served as a designated element for encouraging environmental protection, and whereas all Floridians are encouraged to take part in environmental conservation and protection at home, school, and neighboring communities, whereas the ecosystems of Florida sustain plants and animals unique to our environment, Florida has 1,260 miles of breathtaking coastline along an ocean with miles of beautiful coral reefs, and has approximately 3.4 billion acres of conservation land managed by state agencies, and whereas because the future of Florida's economy and environment depends on the health of our water bodies and natural resources, all Floridians should take part in an environmentally friendly habit, habits such as recycling water conservation. Do I do the rest?
If you'd like.
Now, therefore, I, Frank Picatino, (laugh), Mayor of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2014 as Earth Day.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moving on to, we have a few minutes here, we might get one more in, Agenda Item Number 10, Discuss, excuse me, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance Number 1091, which is a second
Ordinance Number 1091, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the FY 2013-2014 Budget Ordinance Number 1077, providing an effective date, this is the second reading of ordinance Number 1091.
Move to adopt ordinance 1091 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion from council? This time, open up Agenda Item 10 for public comment. Here and no public comment, bring it back to council. Any further discussion from council? Here and none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Bremer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ludina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Kena?
Yes, motion carries. At this time, because I have a feeling that our time's certain at 7:30, it's gonna take a little bit, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then come back to Agenda Item Number 7, which will be our audit report. number seven, which will be our audit report. Reconvene, City Council meeting, City of Satellite Beach, May 7. Moving on to agenda item number seven, discuss, take action on the audit report for FY 1213. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. Our auditors are here to provide our annual audit report for fiscal year 1213, and I'll go ahead and introduce Chaz Hoymann and John Talde, and they're going to go ahead and give you a presentation on.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Chaz Hoymann, Partner in Charge of the Melbourne Office of Car Rigs in Ingram. John is a audit supervising senior. Debbie Goodwood would have been here tonight, but we have a week's worth of training that we do once a year, and of course, it's this week. So fortunately, it was in Orlando, so John and I came over. Debbie had another presentation one of the nights this week, so we split it up. I'm going to give you some highlights. I'll be willing to answer any questions that you have. The first thing I'd like to comment on is page five, which is our auditor's opinion. If you look at the auditor's opinion, and if you looked at the prior year's auditor's opinion, the format has changed because of AICPA standards. And this one, I think, is more readable and understandable in that it talks about management's responsibilities for the financial statement, the auditor's responsibilities, and the types of things that we go through, and then our opinion. As in the past, the City of Satellite Beach has a clean audit opinion, which means that the information's presented in this financial statement, we feel is fairly present in accordance with the reporting standards, and we take no issues or... There are some, if you look on page six, there's some required supplemental disclosure. Outside the basic financial statement, there's some additional pages that we'll talk about in there. And then, you know, so from council standpoint and also the community's standpoint, for years, there's been a management discussion and analysis. It starts on page seven, and it runs through page, page 14. It is a very good narrative of the financial situation and what's occurred in the City of Satellite Beach over the last year. There's comparative information to the prior year in there. A couple of things that I might point out, and we will get to some of this back in the body of the financial statement, but on page nine, there's a new term also. In the past, we had a term called net assets, which was all of the assets the city less the liabilities. The standards have changed, and that is now called net position instead of net assets. And if you look at that, from 2000, on page nine, from 2013 to 2012 to 2013, the net position of the City of Satellite Beach increased $335,000. The liabilities have gone down. If you look at the middle of that page, the liabilities last year were $10,685,000. This year, they're $9,41. And also, because of depreciation and things like that, the total assets have gone down, but still, you still have a positive $335,000. The next page, page 10, is comparative of revenue and expenses for the City of Satellite Beach. If you look at the total revenues, the total revenues decreased by about $700,000 from $10,008 to $10,001. The most significant item in that is a reduction of almost $1 million in grants and contributions. There weren't as many grants in 2013 as the prior year. The total expenses went down about $100,000 from last year to this year. But as we, as we said, the net position of the city improved $365,000. And again, this is a summary, it's a narrative. We get into the body of the financial statements that we issue our opinion on really starts on page 17. And this is the statement of net position governmental funds, and it really includes all of the city's various funds except for the pension funds. Pension funds are shown separately because they sit there, and all they can do is to pay the pension liabilities that the city has. The one change that in the presentation, again, it's according to the standards that it changed, is the three-quarters of the way down the page, there's a separate line item now called deferred inflow of resources. And that deferred is the accumulated increase in the derivative interest from it that you have. That number is $696,000. It, there's an asset on the top side of the financial statement, it's the same number, and in the past, that was shown as a liability, but now it's actually a, under their terms, it's a deferred inflow. If you look at the net position of the City of Satellite Beach, the most significant net position you have are in your capital assets. I mean, your buildings, your equipment, all of those things, and you have $24 million in that category. You have about $1.6 million if you added up all the restricted net assets, the emergency reserves, the Community Redevelopment Agency, the law enforcement, and so all those reserves add up to $1,606,000. And the, if you look at that, the unrestricted net assets is actually a deficit, and that deficit is $1,782,000. That number is lower than the prior year, but it's still a deficit. It's what you all have been working on over the last year to try and understand and to improve. The next page is the statement of governmental wide, and this is all of the funds again from the city, except for the pension funds. And this shows the total expenses, the $9,764, and it also shows all the revenues that we talked about in the past in two certain categories. One thing that increased over last year was your charges for services that have increased over the prior year. And again, when you take all of the revenue and sources of money coming in, less all of the expenses, you have a positive $365,000. The next page is a, it's a different basis of accounting, and it, but this is the balance sheet from the governmental funds. Your general fund is the main fund that you all work with and basically does the bulk of the services that are provided by the City of Satellite Beach. If you look at the total fund balance, it's up to $859,000, okay? That's, that's an increase from the prior year, it was $400,000, okay? So the, that in the general fund is a net change in your fund balance of $459,000. And we'll talk about some of the things that make up that and why it is that way. If you look at the redevelopment fund, the net assets in the redevelopment fund, or the fund balance of the redevelopment fund, last year was $1,600,000. It's down to $894,000. And that relates to the agreement that you, you made with the county, and we'll talk about that, and that's further explained in the financial statements. The other assets, you have capital assets funding, you have a non-major fund, and the non-major fund are your stormwater utilities, community service, and your law enforcement. You look at the total of all of your governmental-type funds, and the net change in all of your governmental funds was a reduction of $53,000, and that's broken down by the major funds, which was some of the stormwater stuff that you did over the last year, and the redevelopment fund, offset by what the general fund increased. And those are further laid out on page 22 of the financial statement as to the revenue and expenses. Page 24 basically reconciles what is on the net revenue of the general government funds to the, the changes in net position in the overall funds. It goes from that negative 53 that we talked about to the overall city having an increase of 365. Talks about that. On page 25 and 26 are the assets and liabilities and net position of your pension trust funds. And then on page 27, I'm sorry, 26, it actually shows the additions, the contributions, the investment earnings, the net appreciation of investments, and the net, the net appreciation in those investments was almost $2.1 million. I mean, we all know that the investment markets have done well. We've all sat here and talked about some of those years when it didn't do that. But a very positive change, the overall net position of your pension funds was an increase of $2,142,000. The notes to the financial statement start on page 27, and there, go through page 52, there's a lot of information in there, a lot of detailed information about the more significant policies and the significant assets and liabilities of the city. I'd like to point out a couple of things to you in reference to the financial statements. On page 42, you have the changes in the long-term liabilities. And you will see that the long-term liabilities at the beginning of the year were $8.7 million. At the end of the year, they were $8.2 million. That, that net reduction is a combination of the payment of the various debt, but if you also look, there's, there's a couple of additions to the, to the debt. One of those, and we talked about the OPEB liability in past, the OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, and that really relates to the cost of healthcare that you provide to your retired employees. And that liability has been, about four years ago is when governments first were required to put that liability on, and each year, the actuarial determination is made, and that one increased by approximately $300,000, but it's still netted. The page, page 48, there's a lot of information about your employee benefit plan, and one of the things that you've looked at in the past is what is the, what is the liability that is there, it's actuarially determined, and the, and how much of covered payroll. Page 48 gives you some of the information, but there's more detailed information on page 57. I'm sorry, not 57. It is page 60. And this is broken down between the police officers and firefighters pension plan and also the general employees pension plan. And as you see, the actuarial value of the assets in the police and fire is about $12.3, $12.4 million. The liability, if everybody retired today and you had to pay them out, that liability the actuary has determined would be $16 million. There's a, an amount of $3.8 million that is a liability there. And your actuary every year determines how to fund what you currently have as employees and what you're accruing, plus they're calculating the amount of that prior to try and improve that. If you, if you look at the fire and police, the unfunded liability went down from $4.4 million to $3.8 million over the last year. Obviously, the markets have a significant effect on that, and, you know, we, we all with our pension plans ride the market up and down. And so the next, the one below are the general employees pension plan. And if you look at that, the actuarial liability is seven point, almost 7.25 million, and you have about $5.7 million. There's a unfunded liability of $1.5 million. That too, I show you, if you look at the prior year, that is, that has decreased, that liability has decreased, unfunded liability has decreased from $1.8 million down to $1.5 million. Again, it's a combination of the funding, and it's a combination of the investment In the future, those liabilities are not shown on that government-wide financial statement. In the next couple of years, there are changes to the, to the reporting requirements that will be coming online, and those liabilities will be recorded on that government-wide statement for you and others, and so will, you know, it will be, it will be a lot of The next thing I would like to point out is on page 51. And this relates to commitments and contingencies, and starting about midway through that, it talks about the Community Redevelopment Agency. It talks about the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee, what was discussed with them, their report, how the City of Satellite Beach handled it, council handled it. And it also then goes on to describe the interlocal agreement that you entered into this year to restabilize your general fund and to basically return some of the unused CRA money book to the county and then to the general fund. On page, on page 55 is your budget actual comparison on your general fund. And if you look at that, this report, this schedule shows the original budget and then the final budget.
Turn that one off, too, and see if that one...
Is that my notice, am I timed? This shows your original budget, your adjusted, adjustments to the budget, and then comparison of your budget actual. On the total revenue, let me try to look here. On the total revenue, you, your actual revenue came under budget by just under a thousand, just over $1,000. On the expenditure side, overall, your expenditures were, your expenditures and other financial sources and uses, you actually spent less, you spent $24,000 less... sources and uses, you actually spent less, you spent $24,000 less than what that final budget was. So you, combination, combination of all those things, you had hoped to, on your final budget, you had hoped to, on your original budget, you had hoped to have more revenue than expenses of $143,000. After you did your budget adjustments, you expected that to be a positive $434,000, and it actually ended up $459,000 positive on the general fund. The next pages are the budget to actual comparisons on the community redevelopment, the capital assets funds, and, you know, the, both of those, you budgeted to use up some of the fund balances in those, and you did use up some of the fund balances in those. In all of them, however, in both of those, you did not use up as much of the fund balance as you budgeted. So you'll have more in your fund balance carry forward into this year, which you're already planning on how to use those. So it's not, it's not new money that we found, but it's just the reporting of that. The next set of our reports starts on page 63. This is our report on internal controls and compliance with other matters, and basically we describe what a deficiency in internal controls are, and the City of Satellite Beach, we found no deficiencies in internal controls, and that's, and no material weaknesses. So that's a positive report. On page 65 is the Independent Auditor's Management Letter. We must look at certain sections of Florida statute and look at your compliance with those. And, you know, this report says that we've done, we've done all those testings, and the, one of the things, if we find ways to improve your financial management, we make suggestions to that. They are not material weaknesses. They could, you know, there are things that could be a material weakness, and we would report elsewhere. These are management letter comments, and, you know, the first, well, let me go back. Last year, we had one in reference to some of your grant expenditures and meeting some of the requirements that were there to document that you weren't using disbarred vendors. We didn't find that you were using any disbarred vendors in the past, but we found nowhere that we could test where you had checked that. But that item has been cleared up, and it's not repeated this year. So that's shown on page 65. The next item is journal entries and schedules for review procedures. You know, with your team, you have a new team here in your finance department. This is the first year that we've gone through the audit with that team, and with some of the journal entries and some of the schedules, when we got them, they weren't all reconciled out. They were easy to reconcile out, but that's your team's responsibility to do that, and so we make that note here. And the next item is Management Letter 21302, and this goes back to that schedule on the general fund, budget to actual. If you look, your city charter says that, that inside a department level, the city manager has the ability to move stuff around, but that you should not overspend the overall departmental budget. And there were some minor amounts. In the, in the general governmental services, it was overspent by $3,000, a little over $3,000. Transfers in were just, were overspent by, were overspent by, no, underspent, I'm sorry. That one's not a negative one, it's just the way that, but transfers out was $8,000 in excess, and over in the capital assets fund, interest was in excess of the budget by $134. They are not material numbers, but we have the requirement to report that, and it really relates, again, to, I believe, the new team you have, and you did a fourth-quarter budget adjustment, but when invoices come in that really relate to 2012, '13, they were, they're put in there in the proper year. It's just that the, those items put you over the budget in those, in those couple of line items. And I believe you, I believe that, you know, that won't happen either. Those two will be off next year. On the other, which is a repeated management letter comment, relates to the unassigned balance in the general fund, which is the things that you've all been working on. It's still not up to the level that you want, and it's not up to a level of two to three months' worth of reserves if you had a hurricane and needed to have those resources available to meet those needs. Yeah, you would, you would probably, between your insurances and your, and the government, federal government disaster stuff, you know, it would all, most of it would all come back in, but it would, it would be tough. And you're continuing to work on that. Your unassigned balance at, your unassigned and assigned balance, last year, which really was all assigned, there was really no unassigned, was $84,000. This year, the, it's over $260,000, so an improvement, but it's still something that needs to continue to be worked on. The last item is communication with those charged with governance. This is a report where, basically, we disclose to you, those that are in charge of governance, that there are some significant estimates that your team uses to prepare these financial statements, and the useful lives of assets is an estimate. How you depreciate those are an estimate, they're significant. And, you know, we agree with them, but they are significant, but you need to be aware of them. The post-employment benefit liability that we talked about, that's an estimate. I mean, there's, you know, we can't, it's an actuarial. You hire an actuary, they do the best, but it's a significant item on your financial statement, and it's an estimate. We also need to disclose to you if we have any disagreements with management, and we have no disagreements with management. And, you know, in that respect, they were very helpful, and, you know, I think the things that you're seeing in this financial statement shows you what your team is doing, so.
Thank you very, very much. Counsel, comments?
Just noted that we were going to have the hard copy tonight. Do you have this in the agenda?
I thought they were delivered.
They were delivered. I do have them. Okay. Well, it said that you'd have them.
Yeah, we had them delivered, but we were at that session, so it's like, I hope they're not sitting on my desk.
Any further comments before I open up for public comments? Okay? At this time, agenda item is open for public comment.
Good evening, counsel. Ron Dragoudis, resident Satellite Beach, also a resident in the CRA. I do not wish to get into planning or the meaning of the statements at this point. The auditors have supposedly presented the facts based on management's presentation of information. The items that I could discuss for financial management is for another day. I would like to point out that we have, as was stated on, I believe it was page 17, Assets and Liabilities. This one I need to bring out. It relates to $300,000 in unfunded pension liabilities that are due in one year, and I'll leave that subject. That's something for the future. That's one of many that I think need to be looked at. However, I go to page 51, related to the disclosure for the CRA. And I'll read the first paragraph, I read the second paragraph, and then I go to the third paragraph, reads, "On August 20, 2013, Brevard County executed an inter-local agreement with the City of Satellite Beach and the, for the Satellite Beach Community Redevelopment Agency for Tax Increment Financing." And I find it in the third line, where it says, "The purpose of the agreement was to return unused tax increment financing," emphasis on unused. "In light of the fact, I would like to place on the record, since this is the first time the statements are supposedly presented to counsel, unless you all have had meetings prior to this individually or in a group, I'm not throwing stones on that, you should be able to see this information, but I question the fact of the use of the language 'unused,' and I will discuss that at a later time. I just question whether all the facts are there for the auditors related to that." And then I go to, and I will write a letter to the city manager in regards to this.
Your three minutes, if you would please wrap your presentation up. The buzzer just went off. Thank you.
I look at the schedule of payments to be made to the county and to the city. I see a cutoff period for the county in 2019, but to the city, I see a cutoff period of 18. Perhaps there is clarification that can be provided related to that item.
Thank you very much. On the commitment to the county till 2019 and only to us till 2018, do you have an answer for that? Or can you get one?
On page 52.
52.
All right. The agreement is to end in fiscal year 1819.
Thank you very much. The public comment is still open at this time on this agenda item. Hearing none further. Agenda, bring it back to counsel. Further comments from counsel?
I just, you know, want to, first of all, thank Chaz and his staff and CRI for working with us on the audit. It was a clean audit, as he stated. You do have a new team. There were some minor issues that have been corrected. Our fund balance is increasing, and that's the path that we actually started taking in 2002 when I came on to counsel, because there was $75,000 in reserves in 2002, and in 2009, we had close to $2 million. So we're back in that same scenario that we were 12 years ago. And I'm just looking at this as a positive step in the right direction, and we're moving in that direction, and we've got plans in place to get the reserves up, and thank you very much for all you've done for us.
Thank you. Further comments from counsel?
We need a motion to accept, please.
So moved?
I have a motion by counselman Brymer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by counselman Montanaro to accept.
Further comments?
I just want to thank the staff. We did have a new staff, and they came in and they picked up with barely a hiccup. They've done excellent work for us, and we're very pleased with them, all of the new folks that we have on board, and I just want to say thank you to them, and thank you to the city manager, and to the assistant city manager, and our assistant finance director.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lenore?
Motion, yes.
Vice Mayor, yes.
Justice Nelson, yes.
Justice Brymer, yes.
Justice, yes.
Yes, motion carries. I have nothing. Staff, thank you. Thank you very much for your help. Appreciate it very much for the presentation.
Mayor, I wanted to go through a quick presentation on reserves real quick.
Please, yes.
Before we move on to the next agenda item.
Okay.
Andy, can you pull up that presentation?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Now, I'm just going to go ahead and pass out a written one to see if you have it. So I think the, our auditors give a really good overview of their view of auditing, of reserves and unfun, unassigned balances and so on, and sometimes the terminology, I think, can be confusing, and I wanted to give kind of a history of our reserves and make sure that, you know, we understand we still have a way to go, but that we are doing a great job. So I wanted to kind of give you an overview of how funds are actually added into the The general fund balance is basically funds that are not allocated during the budget year for a specific expense. So it's basically the money left over after you do your budget, money that's just sitting there. The city funds reserves when the reserves exceed expenditures at the fiscal year end. So that's when we actually put the money into the reserves. A city can allocate funds specifically for reserves or fund balance in your budget, but these funds are not accounted for city reserves until the end of the year, and that's because budgets change, and you'll see how that happened last year, and are considered a working plan, and there are usually unexpected needs throughout the year. So that's why you, sometimes you have several budget amendments throughout the year. So we may budget for reserves, but in the end, you may not put the money in because it's something changes, okay? This shows the history of the city's reserves. In the first year, and actually, and we divided this into the four categories we currently use in reporting reserves or our fund balance, and that's non-spendable. That means that that's basically a promise to pay something, so that money is already spent, basically. So they call it non-spendable because you literally can't spend it. And then there's restricted reserves, and those are reserves or funds that are kept in your fund balance that are restricted for a specific purpose, and that's generally usually an agreement with another agency or so on. And you'll see further down in 11, 12, and 12, 13, the 149, 868, that's actually the women's club agreement that we renegotiated, okay? And then we have committed and unassigned, and you'll see in '08, '09, and '09, '10, that there's nothing in committed, because at that point, there was no term for committed. So all of those funds were expressed as unassigned, okay? The two columns, or, I'm sorry, rows that matter are the committed and unassigned, the bold ones, and those are the monies that we can spend. Right now, if you look down in 12, 13, you'll see $367,274. That's committed, because that's your stabilization fund that you created this past year. And that stabilization fund basically can only be used by staff for emergency purposes, and if we want to use it for anything else, you have to change the ordinance to do it, okay? So that makes us stop and think about using our reserves. In '08, '09, actually, and we'll start with fiscal year '09, '10, in fiscal year '09, the city budgeted to use fund balance in the amount of $76,459 as a revenue to balance the budget, and this isn't, this is not uncommon to do whenever, this is when the economy starts going down, so revenues are falling. In oh-eight, oh-nine, actually, and we'll start with fiscal year oh-nine, ten, in fiscal year oh-nine, ten, the city budgeted to use fund balance in the amount of seventy-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-nine as a revenue to balance the budget. And this isn't, this is not uncommon to do whenever, this is when the economy starts going down, so revenues are falling. And the city actually, in this year, made a conscious decision to bring in fund balance dollars to balance the budget. So, at the beginning of the year, they started out saying, okay, we're going to use seventy-six-thousand dollars as a revenue to balance the budget, but ended up, ended up at the end of the year using three-hundred-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-three. So, basically, what happens is nobody was tracking revenues. So, the revenues are falling, and the expenditures exceeded the revenues, and it was screwed up at the end of the year, and actually, what was actually taken out of reserves was three-hundred, little over three-hundred thousand, okay? So, that's why the end of the year is a big deal. That's when the rubber hits the road. That's when you audit, when you do your audit, okay? Now, what's strange in this budget in fiscal year nine, ten, which is probably very confusing to both the public and Counsel, is in that same budget, the budget brings in money for reserves, but then also, as an expenditure, puts money back into reserves, and it was like six thousand dollars. So, it's confusing. So, on one hand, people may think that they're using, or that we're putting money into reserves because they see that line item, but in actuality, we're bringing money from reserves, that they were bringing money from reserves to balance the budget. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention because that's confusing, I think, to a lot of people. So, you can go to the next one. In ten-eleven, the city budgeted to use the fund balance in the amount of sixty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-one as a revenue. So, in your budget, the city was using designated fund balance as a revenue to balance the budget again, because at this point, the expenses were exceeding the revenues at the time of the budget. But by the end of the year, the city ended up using seven-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand, seven-hundred-and-three dollars, seven-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars at the end of the year, and this is because, at that point, the city stopped making a transfer from the CRA to the general fund for public safety. So, it is so, that demonstrates again that while the city only intended to use sixty-six-thousand dollars, in the middle of the year, something happened to where the fund balance was impacted by the end of the year. And again, in this budget, it showed a line item putting money into reserves at the same time as the money was coming out, which is incredibly confusing. It's taken Andy and I a year to get the handle on how the things were, actually worked out, okay? So, go to the next slide. In fiscal year eleven, twelve, the city budgeted to use unassigned fund balance in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-eight right off the bat, so the beginning of the year, again, revenues are falling, and expenditures were exceeding the revenues, but ended up at the end of the year of using three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-five by the end of the year. So, that's what was actually taken at the end of the year. The year-end budget amendment, that year, approved an additional one-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-five of fund balance to balance the budget, okay? And the reason why this is significant is when we talked, like, the last meeting, when we asked about what management did to increase our reserves this year, I want to point this out, that at the September budget for the twelve, thirteen, one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars was budgeted for this year, okay, for twelve, thirteen. But the next month, the Counsel approved an ordinance to take one-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-eighty-five, one-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars out of reserves. So, one-hundred-and-eighty-five budgeted in, but in the same, a month later, one-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars out, because the end of the year is what matters, okay? You can go to the next slide. So, by fiscal year twelve, thirteen, the city experienced an increase in property values for the first time and budgeted one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars for reserves. Unfortunately, in mid-year, we reduced that amount by one-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand dollars with a budget amendment, because the revenues were, the estimated revenues exceeded what was coming in. So, we had to adjust the revenues by around ninety-five thousand dollars. And we also needed to add in public works maintenance, so that was additional cost that came through that we had to add in, okay? You can go to the next one. So, in twelve, thirteen, the current city council and the city manager placed a total of five-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-six-hundred, or three-hundred-and-sixty-eight in assigned and committed reserves, because you have the stabilization funds, and part of that is the CRA strategy, which included about three-hundred thousand, little over three-hundred thousand came from unused CRA funds. And this was accomplished because we're watching our revenues, you're getting quarterly budgets, okay, and you're strategizing throughout the year on how to match those revenues that we see coming in, and we're strategizing core services over the CRA. That's what we decided to do, okay? And this was also accomplished through the cooperation of our department heads in twelve, thirteen, who basically stopped spending money because we told them to, because we had to put money in reserves, because we had no buffer, okay? Because we could not do what's happened in the past, where you plan on one thing, but then exceed that taking out of reserves by hundreds of thousands of dollars, we just couldn't do that again, and we didn't have anything to do with, okay? So, I wanted to bring that to your attention to make sure you understood how that works, okay, and that, that's why you see these quarterly budget reports. And I provided you some of the ordinances of, you know, that year, this past year, because you'll see the budget amendment that was provided, and you'll see the staff report. There is no, you don't get a budget amendment like Andy prepares. They didn't get that last year. There was no telling, you know, hey, by the way, you know, we're running out of reserves. There was no reports of that nature that were provided to Counsel, and I wanted to make sure that, that's why we're so diligent about that, those quarterly budget reports, is so we can track our revenues and make sure they're, you know, make sure they're on track, so we don't get to the end of the year and go, oops, now we've got to take two, three-hundred thousand dollars out of reserves, okay?
Thank you very much. Counsel, comments to our city manager on her report?
I appreciate the report, and I'm probably one who asked a lot of questions, and I appreciate now getting the quarter reports, but it wasn't like we didn't ask for them, so we, you know, it's the city manager's responsibility to balance the budget, and it was difficult, so I appreciate it.
I understand, and that's what I'm trying to tell you, is that, you know, when you talk about city management, I have a hard time agreeing with, you know, saying that a city management group put money into reserves when we balanced the budget at one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars, putting money in reserves, and then a month later, presented an ordinance to you that took one-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars out. So, that's why I respectfully disagree with that statement, is what I'm trying to do.
Thank you very much. Questions from Counsel? Other questions? Open up for public comment. Here and none, back to Counsel, and let's move on to, thank you, Courtney, very much.
Good presentation.
Great presentation, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item eleven, Jim, discuss take action on Ordinance ten ninety-two.
Ordinance number ten ninety-two, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Satellite Beach City Code Site Plan Review Procedures, amending section thirty dash two oh nine A by altering review duties of Planning and Zoning Advisory Board for site plans, and section thirty dash two zero nine C regarding timing of review of site plans, repealing section thirty dash two twelve by eliminating review of site plans by beautification board, amending section thirty dash three oh one by amending threshold for Planning and Zoning Advisory Board and City Council review of site plans to parcels over five acres, amending section thirty dash three zero three regarding site plan technical requirements, providing for severability, providing for appeal of inconsistent provisions, providing an effective date, it's the first reading of Ordinance number ten ninety-two.
Thank you very much.
We have to adopt Ordinance ten ninety-two on first reading.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion from Counsel?
Yeah, I'm really glad to see this, and you did a real good job on this, John. I think this was long overdue.
Thank you. I know when you look at the flow charts in here, what it was, what it is now, hopefully this helps us a lot. It is.
It's dramatic, I mean, from three months to seven days, generally speaking.
Again, thank you for your guys' work on this. Any further? Just one, I got the same comments, John. Thanks, appreciate it. Here are no further comments from Counsel. I'll open this up for public comment on Agenda Item number eleven. Here and none, back to Counsel.
Yeah, just, one thing I just want to say, I know as a pool contractor, and when I go to our meetings, this is huge for pool contractors, not just in Satellite Beach, but across the state, because of different issues that we encounter with the permitting process, and, you know, anytime you start talking about a SNAP program in our industry, people are thumbs up. So, this is, this is great. It's taken a long time to get here, and I'm glad we're here. Thank you.
I agree. As a general contractor myself, while I'm not active at right now, I'm very sensitive to what is in this document right here, and I think it's going to make a huge difference for bringing in business and getting permits out the door.
I just wanted to mention our intern, Mark Seamer. He couldn't be here tonight, but he's worked very hard on this whole program, and I just wanted to recognize him. He's our unpaid intern, but he's actually, you know, brought a lot to the table, and I just wanted to, you know, publicly appreciate his efforts and-
Mark's going to try to make the second reading, as you said, prior to this, too.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Any further comment? Public comment? I already backed the Counsel. Lenore?
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deanen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Batino?
Yes.
Mayor Batino?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Moving on to Agenda Item number twelve, discuss take action on reinstatement interlocal agreement creating the Space Coach Transportation Planning Organization.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually just kind of a housekeeping thing. We're just updating the agreement to change, you know, some names and statutes and staff members and things like that, so it's pretty much the same thing we had before, just different wording.
Thank you. Discussion from Counsel?
Move to approve the restated interlocal agreement for creating the TPO.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion from Counsel? Here and none, open up for public comment. Here and none, bring it back to Counsel. Just one thing, I hope we, with the Southeast Coalition, that we get a good member on the seat, because when you look at the number of votes that we have, we really have, you know, we share it with four other communities, and I think it's important, I know I went and talked to Courtney today and go, is there any way we can change this so we have a vote on it by ourselves? But she didn't think that would ever be accomplished, but in a way, I wish it would be, but that was just one of my concerns when I read this, so.
Subsequent to creating the South Beaches Coalition, of which we are a member, they have now created a North Beaches Coalition, which is a coalition of some of the beach cities north of us, so I don't think there's much chance that these small cities will get their own seat.
Thank you. Any further discussion from Counsel? Here and none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deanen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Batino?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much, staff, on that one. Agenda Item thirteen, which is Agenda Items for our next regular meeting. Courtney?
For your next meeting, you're going to get a presentation by our, by the Department of Elder Affairs regarding CFAL, so that'd be nice. We're going to do some minor adjustments to the budget to expenditures from community services fund for issues on the DeSoto Tennis Courts and Skate Park. We're going to talk about the renewal of the agreement with the Robotics Club Satellite High School, and then we have some second readings, or a second reading, and then we're going to look at the resolution for communities for a lifetime.
Thank you. And again, as I always state, if you have any items that you would like to see on that next Agenda, please see our city manager on it, okay? Moving on to Agenda Item fourteen, appointments to boards, and we have a beautification board appointment, Nancy Woodman. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that one. Okay, I have a-
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Nancy Woodman is a regular member of the beautification board.
Thank you. A motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Brymer. Further discussion? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deanen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Batino?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Welcome aboard. Thank you for staying. Moving on to Agenda Item fifteen, the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the council minutes from the April sixteenth meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott. Any further discussion on the minutes?
Yeah, I have a comments, page three at the end. It says, Councilwoman Deanen complained, I stated, I don't appreciate saying, I'm complaining, I went back and listened to them, I don't think it's anybody's right to say that I complained, so please put stated or reword that. And also, Councilwoman Gott was pretty adamant about adding the five-page summary to the minutes. I don't see that attached, and then at the end, we discussed adding all the documents that she had, the twenty-six pages, which are not attached, and I agree, we agreed that we were going to add all the documents to the minutes.
Okay.
No, there was never any discussion about adding all of the documents. My comments were to include those three documents, and all three of them are referenced here as being attached to include the five-page chronology.
And then we went back and discussed adding all the documents, and I specifically remember that, so I'm not going to accept these minutes as they are, and I went back and listened to the tape today.
Well, then you'll have to vote no, because it's, some of those documents are not even appropriate to be attached to these minutes.
I think the Counsel, via consensus, agreed to add them at the last meeting.
We did not.
You may not have.
See me on that. Lenore, do you have minutes that would show what we said at the end of this meeting on adding those particular items?
I have notes, but I can do a review of them. I have a second, and if Counsel agrees-
Staff can review that and bring back a recommendation the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a motion on the floor and a second. For vote?
I think you're going to table it to the next meeting, because we're going to review that.
Bring it back?
Yeah, we'll bring it back.
We'll table that item. Move on, any new business?
No, sir.
Okay, here and none, meeting adjourned.
You have to cancel every time I've ever responded to this.
John?